Good evening, welcome to the long awaited Selectman's Meeting. This one's for February 3rd, 2015. I'd like to call the meeting to order and have a roll call, please.
Carolyn Smart, present.
Colin McNabb, present.
Thank you. Sutisio is present, too. And could you all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to announce that this meeting is being tape-recorded. Chairman's additions or deletions. We are adding 3.13, which is so a nice removal. 3.4, 4.1, and 4.2 have slight amendments in the wording, but the subject matter is the same. 1.5, Town Administrator Updates and Reports.
Yeah, I've got a few, so I'll try to go through them quickly to the interest of time. Just a reminder that we'll be meeting again next week as our -- getting back on our regular schedule. So February 10th is our regular meeting. On that agenda, we're going to have representatives from Beta Corporation. They're going to be presenting the pavement management plan, which will be, I think, of interest to a great many people in terms of road repair work and things like that. Obviously, a lot of attention and energy and money has been spent in the area of snow removal over the last week or two. I was talking to Ed Kukula today, and he pointed out, I hadn't thought of it this way. We've had about five feet of snow in the last week with about three feet last week in the blizzard and the better part of two feet yesterday. So our thanks go out to Ed and all of the staff at the Highway Department and the contractors that he brings in, the employees at the Cemetery Department who help out on street paving, as well as opening up our municipal parking lots. Water Department, I saw the guys out today clearing the hydrants, get them cleared out in case of any fire issues. And obviously, our public safety staff who are here all the time and don't get the benefit of sitting at home and enjoying the -- watching the snowfall. So it's been a tough little stretch, and it looks like we've got more coming this week. So I just wanted to extend our appreciation to everybody who's out there. In terms of information for residents, there was an e-blast that was sent out this morning through the website. Highway Department today and probably tomorrow will be pushing back snow bags. We're going to -- they have to make room to store snow, try to clear, open up the intersections and the roadways, just for visibility and also for additional snowfall. So please be patient. It's not some nasty trick that we get a chuckle out of. It's happening in communities all throughout the region. So kind of a necessary evil when you get this much snow without a January thaw. We've had a number of meetings and conversations. I've met with Superintendent Landers, who's here tonight for another matter, but we've been working on the budget, planning to present a first draft of the budget next week, which is what we talked about when we established a schedule for the budget some months ago. It's going to be -- there are going to be substantial omissions or uncertainties at this time. We don't have any indication from Beacon Hill yet on local aid or what foundation aid will be for schools. So we're working with what we've got, and I'll be presenting that next week. There's also been, I know, a robust discussion on Facebook about funding priorities and whether we should be spending more on -- in certain areas and less in others. So this is a great opportunity for people to come next Tuesday and let us know what you think we should be focused on. We typically get almost no input from the public on the budget, and so it would be nice to have some input. And then the last thing, and we're talking about the budget later on, so I'll have a little bit more to say later on, but more next week. And then finally, we had a meeting last week with staff from the Water Department and from Century Bank. Water Department is going to be going to a lockbox service at their next billing cycle in February. So similar to the lockbox that we're using for real estate taxes, the remittance envelope will not send your check back to Town Hall, it'll send it to a processing center. In this case, it will be in Medford. Real estate tax bills, I think, go to Redding. But it's, again, one of the recommendations the Department of Revenue made when they were in a couple of years ago. It's been a great benefit downstairs in the Mayor's Office, and we think the Water Department will see a similar benefit from going to lockbox. Talk at the time.
Thank you. Colin?
I have a couple of things. One, I wanted to give you guys an update on the survey for retiree health care. Because our agenda's so full, and Andy and I are still working on it, I'll be bringing it to the next scheduled meeting if that's all right with you, Sue.
Okay, that's fine.
And then so a nice removal. Andy, what's our number right now for?
We're going to be talking about that later, anyway.
Yeah.
134.
Okay. We're in a deficit of a little over 130.
Okay. All right. Yeah, we can talk about that before.
Well, we've got the other -- we've got that item on the agenda later.
Right.
And then I needed some -- I got an email from somebody at Townsend Rec. I don't know if you guys got the same email. I don't -- it was about the old bank building. What did we?
You weren't at that meeting when we discussed that.
Let's take that, and, I mean, I sent Andy back a note saying, can you look into this, see what you think, and figure it out, and if you need the board's input, we'll put it on the next agenda.
Do you remember what we decided?
I would have to think about it.
It was a long time ago.
Right. But I don't want to talk about it now because it's not an agenda item, but I'd be glad to put it on the agenda for next time.
All right. I did want to read -- Andy kind of touched on this, but I wanted to read this into the agendas or into the record as well. This is a letter from Ruth Carbone. She wrote, "A letter of thanks to the workers of Townsend Highway Department for the many hours they put in over the blizzard of 2015 and for keeping our streets and sidewalks in safe condition. In particular, a big thank you for opening both sides of the crosswalk at the post office and for adding the eastbound sidewalk to the plowing schedule." Just thought.
Nice.
That, actually, you haven't signed yet, so. And then last, this is unfortunately a sad update. "I wanted to give my condolences to Dave Maza and his family over the loss of his son, Cody. My thoughts and prayers with you and your family." That's all I have.
Thank you, Colin. Carolyn?
I have a few, but I'll postpone to the next meeting. They're not that important. We've got a very busy agenda. The only thing I did want to mention was, he had brought up, one of mine was the meeting with Ed Kukula over the road maintenance, and are we going to have on the agenda as well possibly a discussion on the additional Chapter 90 money, what we want to do with that, or?
I mean, we could put that as a separate agenda item, if you'd like.
Yeah, yeah, when it comes in.
That's fine.
The only other thing that I wanted to say was just, we did get a letter from Richard Hanks, and I didn't know if we wanted to read that into the record or have it as part of the next discussion.
If we need to have it as part of the discussion, we will.
All right. The rest of the stuff I'll postpone till next week. We've got a big agenda.
Is there anything that you have listed that you'd like to put on a future agenda?
Not necessarily yet. One of them was a policy issue, the Ed, and then the Chapter 90. Oh, we do need to amend our personnel policies and procedures because we're going to go into bi-weekly pay, and it's specific in our policies.
Would you mind putting those in, like, a memo to Andy so that we can see if we can put them on the next agenda?
Sure. Yeah, and that's it.
Thank you. Anything else? No. The only thing that I'd like to update my board on is that I did attend the MMA conference, the annual meeting, and it was really good. It's the first one I've gotten an opportunity to go to, and we got kind of snowed in, so we stayed for the second day, too. So that was okay. And I attended a couple of workshops and got some ideas. One of them was on open meeting, the open meeting law. That was, as always, informative. One of the guys from the AG's office was there. And the other one was on board collaboration and how other towns do collaboration between different boards and what they've found successful. So great opportunity, if you guys have a chance to go. It's really good.
I've been to a few, and they're really good.
Okay. And isn't that almost perfect? Almost perfect. We have an appointment at 6:15. Do you mind going a couple minutes early? No, okay. We -- North Middlesex Regional --
So just approval of meeting minutes?
Oh, yeah, we do. We're going to do that first and then take up the two minutes, okay? 1.7, approval of meeting minutes. We have two, January 6th and January 13th.
I would move that we approve the meeting minutes for January 6th and January 13th, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Did we change the title? That was the other thing?
We did.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. 2.1, North Middlesex Regional High School inspections is the discussion, and we're going to be discussing the inspection fees for the high school building project, inspection services, fees. And this, when I was thinking about it, we do have the Building Committee Chair and Superintendent and our OPM and representative from SMMA to talk about the controlled construction. Okay? So if we can do that first, then there was a memo in our packets regarding the accounting, if you will. If we're going to be transferring money back and forth between the Building Committee and the town, how might we do that? And then I thought we could separately discuss the inspectors that today get stipends, and then after that, the Building Commissioner, because he doesn't get a stipend the way that they do. Does that make sense? We do it that way? Okay. Mr. Templeton?
Okay, well, I think this goes back probably two months or so when we were last here. Yeah, provided with the help of Peter Collins, the OPM, some information on just, you know, Massachusetts controlled construction projects, just the responsibilities of the OPM, the responsibilities of the designers, and how that potentially would impact this project. What I really wanted to provide was just give you all an understanding of what the Building Committee is expecting the OPM and the designers to do during, you know, during that, you know, during this whole construction process. So I can answer any questions that you all might have. Lorraine from SMMA, and Peter Collins, our OPM from Hery, can certainly answer any questions that you might have during that process.
I'm just wondering, for the benefit of the public, because we did get the material that you sent, but for the benefit of the public, can we just get a summary of what the responsibilities are and?
Sure. Why don't I let Peter go through the responsibilities of the OPM, and then Lorraine Finnegan can give an update on the responsibilities for the designer?
Certainly. Good evening. Peter Collins with Hery, working as the owner's project manager on behalf of the Building Committee. And strictly in response to the construction phase, the OPM will have representation on the site during the construction phase, working collaboratively with the Building Department, the Building Commissioner, the designer, and the Building Committee. We will have onsite representation, observing, recording, and documenting, and sharing information with all parties of the project. In particular, we'll be sharing reports, inspection timelines, progress of the construction with the building officials here in town, along with the designer, keeping them informed. The design team will also have a presence onsite periodically, and I'll have Lorraine speak about her role and her staff's role on that. What we're going to be doing is we're going to be certainly monitoring, observing the progress of the work with the general contractor so that it does conform to the contract documents, and alerting any of the building officials on certain timelines when milestones of the project are reached along collectively with the general contractor. So those are some of the roles we're doing. We're also obviously monitoring the project scope, the project schedule, the budget on behalf of the Building Committee, and reporting back to the Building Committee at our meetings on the overall progress and quality of the project during the construction phase. That's just kind of a thumbnail of some of the things we're doing on a daily basis out there.
Lorraine?
Hi, I'm Lorraine Finnegan. I'm an architect, and I'm also the project manager for the design team. As a designer, we are responsible both from an architectural and engineering point of view for generating the contract documents and the specifications that form the contract that the contractor will build the project from. We provide the initial construction supply certificate, which is a pre-construction affidavit that we provide to the Building Inspector for issuance of the permit to the general contractor. Basically, what that is saying is that we have designed the building in accordance with building codes and that we are there to observe that construction during the course of it. We'll have an onsite weekly representative at the construction meetings. Our team of engineers typically go out monthly, but as, it's obviously as their work is going on, so it'll be staggered. So during foundations, the structural engineer might be out there more often than when the mechanical and electrical start, you'd see more of the mechanical and electrical engineer. The civil engineers will be out there, but the architect will be there on a weekly basis. Our job is to observe the construction as it proceeds, to note any deficiencies that are not in compliance with the contract documents. We are the interpreter of the contract documents as the architect, so if there are discrepancies or disagreements, as the architect, we provide an interpretation as to what should be provided with, working with the OPM through the owner, and provide that information to the contractor. At the end of the project, we perform inspections. We call it a punch list. We go through and make sure that everything that we've noted through the course of the project has been corrected if it was deficient, and then we create a final punch list that says if the building has been built in accordance with the contract documents, if something is missing, it is noted, and they have to complete that work. Then, once we are satisfied with that, we issue what's called a substantial completion certificate, and we issue post-construction affidavits, that are second compliance certificate to the Building Inspector, that says based on our observations, the building has been constructed in accordance with the plans and specifications and the building codes. So it is our job to observe during the course, to note when things are not in performance, to make sure they're corrected, working with the OPM onsite, and then at the end to write, to create a deficiency log if required, and a final construction certificate to the Building Inspector.
Thank you. Any questions? Joan?
Joan, we talked last week, and you had mentioned about checking with some other towns that have done similar projects, about the costs associated with the inspections.
With the snow, with the five feet of snow, it's been very difficult. I mean, I'd like to reach out to people. It varies, and we're a regional school district, so it's very different from a town. The information in general that I've received, talking to people in the field, is it varies from, you know, if it's town, they don't charge themselves, and to different fees set by the Town Board of Selectmen.
Wasn't -- we just recently did Air Shirley, right?
Yeah, that happens to be one of our projects.
SMMA?
Yep. And that is a regional school district, and what was decided there was that anybody who was full-term, full-time employee would not receive extra, but anybody who was not a full-time would receive compensation for additional work required on behalf of the project. It was a small budget, I believe about $25,000.
That was, was that a renovation or?
That is a renovation addition.
Okay, so it's not quite the same as a brand-new building, but?
Actually, it's the same level of effort because it's the same.
Yeah, remember those discussions.
And it is also over a two-year duration.
Thank you. Colin?
Actually, you had looked at different regional districts, didn't you?
I have a list of regional districts that did not waive fees. I didn't find a regional district that actually waived fees.
Because we're the host town. Did you, do you have that list with you?
Ron Dusko didn't waive fees. Air Shirley didn't waive fees. Berlin, Oilston didn't waive fees. Ilwondin, Concord, Hydrant, Wilfridham, Hampton charged fees. Charlton, we have originally charged fees. Athol Orange didn't waive the fees. Chesapeake Regional didn't waive the fees.
So I have a question. Does that mean they didn't waive, quote, permit fees, normal permit fees, or?
Normal permit fees.
Really? I thought you mentioned Concord, and I thought that had, but anyway. Okay. Colin?
So, and I, you know, in talking with Andy, Andy, you had mentioned that, and I think, Rob, when you and I talked, we talked about the same thing. If we say set up an amount and we end up getting close to that amount, we can bill again?
Correct.
Correct?
Right. With the departmental revolving account allows us to.
Why don't we talk about that? Are we through with, are we through with this? Rob, was there something else that you wanted to? Okay, so.
From a controlled construction, I mean, it's just, I guess what, you know, what we wanted to make clear was that everybody understood when, you know, when the folks for the project were going to be onsite, and, you know, to give you a better understanding of, you know, the accountability in terms of, you know, some of the affidavits that needed signed or, you know, the accountability that the Building Committee and the OPM to make sure the building progresses, you know, through, you know, through that process, right? That, you know, the payments and all of that, I mean, you know, that's.
We'll take care of that.
Yeah, that's for your side.
Right.
We have the budget, and it is what it is, but from a level of effort standpoint, there is, you know, a significant level on the, you know, what I call the Building Committee's responsibility for, you know, for the project. And, you know, those folks are, you know, there to support, you know, the district and therefore the town in terms of making sure the project goes the way we want it to.
And I think, I think it's important to balance that, the way that, one sec. It doesn't negate the responsibility of our commissioner or our inspectors.
Absolutely.
And we're not, I'm not hearing that at all, and that should be made clear. The other thing is that the responsibility, which is significant on both the shoulders of the design team and the OPM, are already being paid for by Townsend as well as part of the building project. Okay? So we have to keep that in mind as well. But I thank you for that information. The next thing we wanted to talk about was the recommendation from the town accountant as to how we might handle. We know that the Building Committee set aside money, but it's not just a matter of them giving us a lump sum of money, because we don't want to put it like in the Building Commissioner's existing budget, and not necessarily can do that anyway. So Andy, can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. We had a number of conversations, and they started back when Kim Fels was still here, continued after Terry Walsh took over, and Terry had some conversations with folks at the Department of Revenue about the best way to do this. And we had talked internally prior to that about the various options that were available. But the Department of Revenue recommended to Terry that we do is that we establish a departmental revolving account. That would be an account, we have numerous revolving accounts that we authorize every year, six or eight of them, and they get, they get established by town meeting and reauthorized annually by town meeting. And what that will allow us to do is to, is to collect a fee to offset our costs for the inspections. So we don't know really what that, what that is going to end up being. We, early on, told the Building Committee that they should budget $350,000 for fees. Obviously, it's in everyone's interests if, if it doesn't cost that much and the project comes in less than projected. What the revolving fund, department revolving account would allow us to do is to assess an amount, put it into the account, pay the inspection, the inspection costs directly out of that account, not out of the Building Department budget or the wire inspector's budget or whoever. As that gets drawn down, if we get to the point where the project still has substantial work left to be done, more than we think we have in the account to cover the costs, we can tell the committee, we're going to need an additional amount of funds.
So are you thinking, like, to assess them every six months or something like that?
I think we would, I think we would just keep, keep an eye on the account and on the balance of the account. We do that with all of the accounts.
But initially, starting off?
Yeah, so initially, I think, you know, I think you pick a number.
A year?
And say, you know, this is, this is what we think is a reasonable starting point. If that lasts us a year, or lasts us half the project, three quarters of the process.
Colin, you had a question?
It wasn't a question, it was more a comment, just on what Andy was picking a number. You know, since we can reevaluate as we go, my feeling is that we should assess $100,000.
Well, let's have the discussion about the money part first, and then we can figure that out. I mean, we haven't said we're going to give them extra money.
Okay.
We haven't said what amount we're giving, so we have to still talk about that. Carolyn?
Well, in regards to the revolving fund, I have to voice my frustration, because back on August 13th, I said we need a revolving fund that I had spoke to the DOR and that I wanted it to be put on town meeting, because now we're going to have to wait till May town meeting to establish a revolving fund. In fact, I've heard from several meetings. So I have to voice my frustration with that. The second part, where I'm coming from, is that you had voted, before I was here, on September 30th, 2013, to have our inspectional service permits and fees at $350,000. So the school would pay $350,000 to the town, the town would deposit it in the revolving fund when it gets established, which now is in May, and we would decide how to pay our inspectors out of that. It shouldn't be an assessing thing as we go along, in my opinion.
Okay, well, that's a thought. I guess what I was thinking in terms of the assessment is, in a way, we're paying ourselves with our own money. Okay? I mean, we're paying, we're paying our people with some of Townsend's money, some of Ashby's and some of Pepperell's, and certainly none of the state's, because it's not a reimbursable thing. But if, if that's the case, then if we, let's say the $350,000, and we did, we said we wanted that to cover what it was, you know, and I think, you know, that was hopefully the worst-case scenario. But looking at it more from a conservative perspective, we don't want to assess the building project more than what's fair and reasonable and truly used either. So if we were to put that $350,000 into the revolving fund, that, my understanding was that that was going to end up not necessarily going back to the Building Committee, that it would go into the general fund afterward. So what I don't want to do is say, okay, well, we only spent this much of it, now we've got this left over, where does it go and how does it get there? So that's why I asked the question about the assessment part, because that makes sense to me. We'll see how, you know, to see how it's going and send them a bill, basically, and put that in there, so. But that was just my thought.
And I can follow that train of thought and understand, but with the regional district, we waived, we waived a we waived, we waived almost $600,000 worth of permit fees. So in a sense, you know, we've already waived what Townsend would put into, if Pepperell was the host town, for example, and they were incurring the costs from the inspection services and the other things, they would waive their own fees, like Town waived their fees. So that's in, in essence, what you've done by lowering the permit fee to $350,000. Now, in terms of, I understand you feel that if there's money left over at the end of the project, you'd like to see it go back to the school. I follow that train of thought. But in a sense, since it's our money anyway, having it go back into our general fund, it's still going to Townsend. So that, that's not an issue.
I don't, I don't know if that would...
It seems like a backdoor tax to me.
Yeah, I...
And I, that's why I don't let, that's why I want it...
That's why I think it is a backdoor tax to Townsend in essence because we have the additional costs for the employees. And we've had that all along with the high school because we're the host town. So our public safety services and everything else have always incurred the additional costs that Pepperell and Townsend, that Pepperell and Ashby may not be contributing fairly towards. So that, that is a problem with having a host town. So I, I disagree that it's a double tax or a backdoor tax.
Okay. So we talked about the revolving fund and potentially assessments and stuff. Can we talk about, what have we got? Wiring, gas, plumbing? What am I missing?
Building.
Building.
Isn't...
He said wire, she said wiring.
Electrical.
Electrical, plumbing...
Gas.
Gas. Are those the three?
For the stipends.
Those are the three that are stipend today, right? Okay. Yes. And, and we'll talk about the building commissioner separately. When we got that original estimate that Rich put together, what were we saying on that? I can't remember what the amount per hour was. Was that 45? I think it was $45 an hour was the recommended amount. We did receive information, and it's available to anybody who wants to see it, on the permits, the number of permits that we've had over the course of the last several years, thinking about it in terms of stipend and thinking about it in terms of, of work that's been done over the, the past several years and, and where are we at. I don't know about anybody else, but I was comfortable with, you know, they've increased a bit, but the trend on all of them is, is pretty level right now. So it tells me that, you know, the, the stipend amount that we're at probably is okay for, for the base anyway. And, and I'm just expressing my, my point of view on it. The, my suggestion would be, okay, the revolving fund wouldn't be established until the spring town meeting. We're not breaking ground until the end of May. The work that needs to be done between now and, say, July 1, which is when that revolving fund would, I imagine, be established for. I don't know if it would, right, is that right, Andy?
I think you can actually establish it mid-year.
Okay.
So we could actually establish it. It would certainly be...
For June 1 if we wanted to.
We might be able to do it a little bit earlier.
Okay, for June 1. It might be cleaner if we just said July 1. But, but thinking about it logically, can somebody tell me if I'm not looking at it right? Until then, what we'd ask the inspectors to all do, which is what Rich has been doing all along, is to look at the plans and, and be up to date with all of that. But, Lorraine?
They need to issue the building permit.
Yes, yes. You can't break ground without the building permit, the actual piece of paper and all of the signatures that go along with that, I understand. But I mean, in terms of the work that, that our inspectors would have to do, when you're breaking ground, do you have to do the plumbing stuff, right? No, there's nothing, I know nothing about construction.
Could ask the plumbing inspectors right there.
Yes.
Yep. What was the question you were asking about?
If we're breaking ground...
Yep.
Okay, I know Lorraine knows the answer to this question, but just, you know, for us that don't, you're breaking ground, that to me means you're building, you're digging a hole.
Yep.
And I know you have to bring utilities in. Is it at that point that, that you guys would start getting involved?
Well, I went over the print a little bit and they're going to demolish the building this year now?
Not until after.
Oh, okay.
That's after the whole thing is done.
If you demolish your building, take the building down, that, that needs a plumbing permit.
Yeah, but we're, we're not doing that until after the new building is built.
Okay, but you're going to do it?
Eventually, yes.
So you need a permit for that?
Yes.
If there's gas in there, you need a gas permit.
Uh-huh. But that, I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about it for July 1, when we break ground on the new building.
Mm-hmm. Well, you're going to put in a foundation first, the footings, and then you work your way up.
Okay.
You leave the, you know, holes in the foundation where the septic tank is, and I think there's some acid tanks and a few other things, grease traps, things like that. Mine starts 10 feet outside the foundation.
Okay.
From there in, that's my responsibility. And getting back to, I, I need all the help I can get from these folks here, but who signs the final permit on the plumbing? I think it's myself.
Mm-hmm.
See, I'm responsible for that. So...
As is, as is the building commissioner.
Right. It's quite a responsibility because, like I told Richard, this kid's not even born yet, are going to go to that school. And I'm responsible for that. So it's an electrical inspector, building inspector.
Yeah, we're not diminishing what you're responsible for.
Well, you are in a way, when you say that, like last meeting, you said that everybody's looking for work, you know, there's plenty of work. We knew what we were getting into and we took the job as inspectors. Now, I didn't like that. Now, that hurt. So what I'm saying is, I'm signing the permit, looking at the job, I'm checking for the, there's a ratio between, you know, apprentices and journeymen. You can't have more than one-on-one. So there's going to be places where I have to look around and make sure that this fellow is licensed to do the work. It's quite a responsibility. Now, these people are going to help, fine, but I sign the permit. And I'm living in the town and anything goes wrong, they're going to say, who did the inspecting?
No, I totally understand. I totally understand. And, and I, please, if, if, if I in any way made you think I was diminishing your role, I was not. Okay? It was not intended that way. Colin, let me just finish the thought. My, my thought was this, okay, July 1, all the action gets going, is, is basically...
Yeah, so it started, let's say, in the plumbing.
What, what I'm trying to determine is between now and July 1, how much work are you guys going to have to do on this?
Well, it's all plumbing issues.
Right.
That should have started, that has already started, but this should have been squared away long before now because we started receiving on January 2nd. So our workload has started already.
Yes, and, and I understand that. You've done a lot of it already. You, you have because you've been involved in several meetings that I was involved in too. So I know you've already put in time and you've already reviewed stuff and you've given input to the planning board and to zoning board, et cetera. So I, I'm...
I guess the shortest thing to answer to your question, you're asking how much involvement would Richie have when they break ground? Not too much. There's going to be a lot of excavation work and then they start doing foundations. And then I guess they can answer better on their estimated schedule of work.
Sure, I can, I can help out with that.
It's kind of like I'm, I'm looking at when will it ramp up?
Sure. I think that, I mean, what you're trying to get at is, right now, you can't set up a revolving fund until the town meeting, but you need to pay these folks for the effort that they're doing. What's the, what's that level of effort going to be and how?
I'm trying to figure out, come, come July 1. Well, the, the other thing that I believe the accountant said too was that we can't, like, save bills from one year to the next. Okay, so it, it's like, we have to figure out, how are we going to pay you? How, how are we going to compensate you? So that's all part of that information. Rich?
What you could do in, what you could do between now and then is just send us a monthly invoice to the building committee. And that'll get you through until you set up your revolving account. And once that's done, you know, then invoice us for the $100,000 or $50,000, whatever, whatever number you, you pick. And then we'll put that, we'll send you that. You put it in your revolving account and use that.
Well, we'd have to put it some, we, I don't think we can put it anywhere.
Yeah, wherever you put it is wherever you put it, but that's what you could do with me.
That's the problem. You can't, you can't, we can't put it anywhere. You can't take it and put it into a line item because the budget's already set for this year.
Go in the general fund. And that's, that's what my urgency was about the last town meeting.
But we're, we're beyond that. I understand, I understand your frustration, but I'm...
I know, but you know, we've made decisions that are hurting people.
Carolyn, we have to go forward. Okay? We have a situation in front of us today. We have to go forward. Colin?
So, we're going all over the place. So we need to decide, how are we going to pay these guys?
Exactly. We can't have a suggestion.
We can't do anything till then.
So, my suggestion is, is for the time being, that the stipend inspectors, Andy and Rich, and they should figure out some way to track their time. What, Rich, what was the rate that you had?
It was 45.
Was it $45 an hour?
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
As a rate. Are you guys okay with that as a rate?
No.
After taxes, maybe. No, that's not, make way to that, Colin. And we're going to be working. I get a, you know, I'm a part-time inspector.
Right.
They, once that starts going, they want me there a lot.
I know, you're my plumber. I said, you're my plumber. I know it's part-time.
But what I'm saying, it's, it's slow and then it's going to pick up. And they're going to have quite a crew there.
So...
And I'll be going down there, when I'm working, get a phone call, can you get down here? Because every pipe that they put in the ground has to be tested.
So are you, are you guys comfortable with Andy working with Rich to come up with a rate or yourselves? Are you comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with what Richard will come up with.
I, I'm sorry. I, Rich already came up with $45 an hour. That was what was on that original estimate that came up with the $351,000. I'm not comfortable going beyond what Rich recommended, which is what they base the budget on. It's as simple as that. Okay? There's a stipend.
It doesn't sound like we're going to stick to the 350 either.
No, because I'm saying that that was probably the best-case scenario or the worst-case scenario.
But it could be either one. Just saying.
I'm willing to go $45 an hour. You log your time and we assess the building committee as, as we go along.
I'm willing to go along with the original stipend amount that they, they had requested and to charge a 350 and put it in a revolving fund.
Oh, goodie. It's my decision.
That's how we get to compromise.
Just think about it.
And I'm comfortable with Rich working with Andy to come up with a different rate if they're not satisfied with the $45.
I'm not comfortable with Rich working with Andy because you guys directed him on September 24th, 2013, to come back and tell us how the accounting would work. And that was a year and a half ago. And here we are. And now people are doing the work and they're not getting paid. Sorry.
Jim?
So, there's, there's another issue here with the Board of Health as far as septic systems concerned also. I'm just bringing it to the front of you because of the fact that they reduced the bathrooms, et cetera. They brought it down to 10,000 gallons per day. And that throws that right back into the hands of the Board of Health. And the Board of Health doesn't always have somebody that's an installed inspector, et cetera. And they have to put it in with our regulations also.
I, I can't, I can't discuss that. That's something that you guys have to handle with, that's not something that's in front of the board today, Jim.
Okay, I just brought it up. That's all right.
That's fine. If, if there are issues, then you guys need to talk with the building committee or whatever about those issues.
So, may I, so?
One sec. Joan?
Colin can go first.
So, so we don't keep going in circles here. I think the first thing we need to do is decide an amount. And then after that, then the, the building committee's kind of out of it until they, you know, we assess and find out how much, it may end up being $350,000.
It may.
So, but we need to come up with an initial fee. And I think $100,000 is reasonable.
Oh, you mean for the, for the initial assess?
For the initial assessment because we can always assess more if we end up getting to that point.
Yeah, that's fine with me too. Do you want to do a motion on that part?
Well, I just have a question. It's more of a legal question. I, I've never heard of a situation where you can assess fees. I mean, you're either, you have to vote, anybody that's built, you have to vote for the amount of the permit fees and exactly what kind of permit fee that you're, that you're charging for. You can't just vote an amount to assess.
It's not, it's not a permit fee. It's inspection services that our inspectors will be performing.
So that means you're voting to waive the permit fees and you assess separately for inspection services?
We're doing a whole different type of charging that we don't have any...
But that's why the revolving fund...
...bylaw or nothing in your rules or anything, nothing in our rules that lets us do that.
The DOR said we could do this, right?
Rob, you and I talked about this.
Hold on, hold on, Andy.
They talked about the revolving fund.
Yeah, the only, I think we're getting off topic a little bit in terms of whether it's $100,000 assessment upfront or 350 or, you know, somewhere in the middle. 350 is not the base permit fee for the project. If we were going to go by the, by the, the schedule, it would be much higher than that. So I think we're, I think we're getting lost in the weeds by saying you can't do $100,000, but you can do 350. The process is the same. The board, the board can change the, the fee. I think the board did this for the, for the Library Senior Center project back in '07, '08. So it's, it's within the board's purview to do that. Truly, the, the bigger question is how do you pay for the inspections?
Well, I would be happy if, if, if we had something written up exactly if you want to do it increments, you know, I wouldn't have scheduled, I'd reduce the amount by 3/5 to a smaller amount if we had a schedule in front of us of what we, so that everyone's clear on what we're charging for permit fees.
Carolyn, you keep calling it permit fees. It's not...
We don't have anything in the rules for inspectional services. So this is where it's getting a little confusing.
Well, we have stipends. Those are for inspection services.
It's, yes. But you've got to cha, you're charging an entity something to put into a revolving fund to pay your inspectors. And it's always been permit fees. So I don't understand how we can just charge assessing fees.
Which go into the general fund.
Yes.
And this is not going into the general fund. This is going...
It's going to be, it is going to the general fund.
I don't want to argue about it. I don't want to argue about it. I want to get something done. Okay? Can we say, in terms of what you're trying to, to say right now, Colin?
Yep.
I heard you say, an initial, an initial assessment, once the revolving fund is established, an initial assessment of $100,000?
Yes.
Okay? Is that a motion?
Just a question first. You did the, was it you, did you, did the accountant call the Department of Revenue or was it yourself?
Terry called, the accountant called.
So there's no issues with increasing the assessment if we have to? So say we blow, we, we blow through the $100,000 and it ends up costing $200,000.
Correct. A while ago, I talked to the town administrator...
Could we just have one conversation, please?
A while ago, I talked to the town administrator in AR about this. And that's a, that's a regional district. They waived the building permit fees, but they charge for the cost of inspections. I don't know. I think they did it with a revolving account. I'm not sure. This is a common process, according to the DOR, a, a common process for school projects. So it's, you know, we use revolving accounts for recreation programs. So money goes into them, money goes out of them. It doesn't get lost in the general fund and need to get re-appropriated. That's the, that's the benefit or the beauty of a revolving account. So if we go, you know, if we say $100,000 upfront and that gets us through the first year, say, whatever time period, then we say, all right, we're going to need, we, we estimate that there's this much work done. The project is 50% done. Provide us another amount of, of money. We'll put that in. We can continue to pay out of it.
Okay. So what we're really talking about is the very first assessment right now?
Yes.
So just one, if, if I could add one more thing. The 3, the $350,000 was, I interpreted it as a rough estimate of what the costs were going to be. The building committee asked the town for that, for budgeting purposes. So that's, that was the, the basis on which we, we provided that. I don't, I, I didn't take it as a, as a guarantee that we were going to pay the four inspectors $350,000 over the course of the project. It was a, it was a... application to the MSBA and to bring the project to, to town meetings and to debt exclusion votes.
And that's how I remember it as well. And, and I don't remember even seeing the backup. It, that was just the information that we got. That was the new number. It was three-fifty-one, so. And the building committee was happy to budget that. Rob?
And I think through that process, the permit fee was waived, and this is that inspection fee or the level of effort.
Inspection service.
Piece of it. Just a reminder, you know, the, the budget for the project was, you know, three-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand. Of that, you know, thirty-eight percent is, you know, Townsend. So, it's kind of that, you know, from a, from a money that wouldn't be coming from ourselves. I say that as a Townsend resident, would be about two-hundred-and-seventeen thousand dollars of that budget.
So, it's split according to the, the normal split?
Yeah.
So, we're spending our money on this as well.
Mm-hmm.
That's fine. Colin, could I, yes?
What is this building gonna cost? What's the final total?
Eighty-nine.
Construction cost is sixty-eight million dollars estimated at this time.
Sixty-eight million?
Estimated construction cost.
Construction cost. That's not all the additional costs, too. The total project cost, Rob, what's that number you throw out?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, yeah. So, where's the rest of that come from?
Pardon me?
Where, where do the other fees come from, if it costs that much, just to build the builder? That's what I'm asking. What did it actually cost just to build this builder?
Construction costs is-
Sixty-eight million.
Sixty-eight million.
So, there's quite a difference in millions between what we're fighting over three-hundred-and-fifty. I don't think this-
You should see our meetings. We fight over like twenty bucks.
We fight even if there isn't money involved, which is rarely is, right?
Yeah, Colin's, um, one sec. Colin?
I'm done.
Okay.
I actually have a suggestion that would solve at least the plan review and be fair to our inspectors, and we can deal with it in May when we have a town meeting. And I don't know if the school committee would be willing to do it, but why don't we sub out the plan review? And they pay for it directly out of their budget.
Sub it to who?
They have it, they have plan review companies. That's all they do. And then the burden is off our inspectors. They're not stressed out trying to do all this plan review and not be paid until May or June. And they invoice the building committee directly. It has nothing to do with Townsend.
Why would we want to pay an outside agency when we can pay our own people?
I can give you that answer really quick.
Yeah?
If something happens, you have an entity to go back to. Something should go awry, for whatever reason, you have that engineering firm to go back on.
We already have-
If we do it ourselves.
SMMA's, we already have SMMA's engineers signing affidavits. We have an OPM. The only issue, I have complete confidence in our people here. I have complete absolute-
So, why?
And, and why not give them the money? If I'm gonna give anybody the money, I want to give it to my local folks that do that work for us all the time.
Well, then why don't we give them the option?
Well, I want to give it to our folks, too, but we're not doing that. We're not even going to be paying them until May.
We haven't had that discussion yet.
But we can't do anything for them till May because we, and they're doing all the work now.
Okay. I'm gonna go back to the permits. When I look at the amount of work that's been done over the last ten years, it's pretty level. And as a matter of fact, the highest number of permits this last year had to do more with things that would affect Rich, like roofing and, and replacement windows and, and actual building construction stuff. Everything else is fairly flat.
You have three or four inspections per permit, though. It's not just one inspection per permit. Like, if you pull a wiring permit, you gotta go and do a rough. You gotta go out, I don't know, you could speak to this better, but being married to a contractor, you gotta go out and do a final. If they fail, you gotta go out again. So, you're looking at a permit saying it's one thing they have to do. They have to review the plan. They have to go out for inspections.
So, you would rather give money, why can't we do what Joan suggested, and we just bill our, we just bill them for the services for now, between now and July one?
How are you gonna pay them? Are you gonna send them a check directly? I don't think ethics would let you do that.
Can I speak?
Yes.
I'm recognized. So, you can invoice the building committee, and I have to ask Peter this because I saw something in the notes on general contract. Could we issue a paycheck from, from the district on behalf of the building committee to, to the inspectors? This way it comes out of, and Rich, you might know more. I'm just trying to find a resolution.
I don't know if that, ethics would allow that, because now they're being paid as a separate entity for a job they're already doing.
Yeah.
Can I make a recommend, oh, just a suggestion? Could Andy and Rich and Nancy Hayes work together to figure out how that can be, what we can do? But for the hours, it's, it's not the intention, it's not my intention as the superintendent, that the people that work hours already are not gonna get paid, because I know that they put in hours. If they invoice the building committee, we can, but I think we need to figure out how to do that. I know it can be done.
Is Terry, Terry is away right now?
She's away this, away this week.
Andy?
Yes.
So, if, if, I'm assuming right now, when, when these guys go out and do something, how does, how does that work? They, they, they give their time to the, to the town, and the town then pays them?
No, they're paid a stipend right now, a yearly stipend, okay? So, whatever work they do, they do for that stipend. The money that we collect for permits goes into the general fund.
So, if, so, I guess from that standpoint, if the town charged the building committee based on what they, you know, the work that they did, can you then pay them based on-
There's nothing in our budget.
No, no.
But if-
There's no appropriation.
Well, there will be. Once you, once you send, once you send us an invoice for-
No.
It's not how municipal finance works.
There's not a, there's not a line item that we can put that money into, because it wasn't part of the budget.
It has to be appropriated back out. So, whatever payment you send to the town goes into our general fund, and until we have a town meeting, we can't appropriate and put it into a budget or put it into a revolving, or not revolving.
What about, what about creatively financing so that there'll be a bump the first payment in July?
I, I guess you could do that. Legally, I think you can do that. I'm not sure what the, I'm not sure what the ripple effect is, though, among other employees.
I, I'm not, I think, I think the problem is, we can't pay them for now.
Right.
I don't think it makes sense to hire somebody outside that we can pay now, okay? I'd rather see them do the work, and we can make an adjustment for how much we're willing to pay them on an hourly basis, considering the kinds of things that they've done for the stipend before.
If they keep track of the time between the beginning of this process and when we do the revolving fund, you can't back, give them back pay?
No, you can't, you can't do that. It, like Carolyn said, it's not part of the budget. It's not something-
Unless we did it as a stipend, for plan review stipend, on an average of the hours that they put in.
Do you like that idea?
I mean, that's something that you can do.
You want to try that?
So, we could back pay them that way?
Well, no. What we'd be saying is-
They get a set amount out of the revolving fund for the plan.
Yeah.
Based on how many hours you could average it.
Okay, so we do it separately, then. Does that make sense?
I don't have an issue with that, if, if they don't.
Oh.
Where they going?
Wait, Richie?
I think they're, I think they're caucusing in the hall. If I could jump in. I think, actually, I, I think Carolyn's idea of, of farming this out might have some, might be clean, cleaner, in a way. I think it's worth, I think it's worth looking into. We don't have to worry about how we pay them, because they would be, they would be subs to the school department.
All right.
And then I, I agree. I'd rather pay our local guy.
Well, I mean, I hear you. I hear you, okay? But I'm also concerned about how much does that put, how, how long's it take to hire somebody? How do you figure that out?
Can we ask-
They can find somebody quick.
Can we ask the, the two stipend inspectors here?
Rich?
If they, if they are like the idea that we kind of came up with?
Rich, he wants to farm out the, the plan review stuff?
Farm it out?
Yeah. Would you be comfortable with that, and then pick it up?
Have you seen the, all the blueprints, the rolls?
Well, yeah, but it's not all plumbing.
No, no, but you gotta go every page and look through every page.
The other thing that we were talking when you guys stepped out-
Yeah.
-was kind of back paying you through a stipend, if you keep track of your hours up until we create the revolving fund.
Well, not that. I think what Carolyn said is simply a stipend amount for plan re, plan review.
Right.
Payable in, in July.
I mean-
I think you can pay it.
So, you, you'd be doing the reviews for the plan, but you wouldn't get the stipend for the plan review until-
Okay.
After town meeting.
Okay, so it is-
And if you're okay with that-
Not unless the town meeting votes no.
Carolyn, Carolyn-
They're just, they're just voting to-
Create the funds.
-establish a revolving fund and give us authorization. Every year, we vote, "So, on this revolving fund, we'll allow you to use a hundred thousand dollars." So, they vote the limit. So, that's, you know, it's, it's, they're not gonna be voting on paying you or not paying you. We're just voting to establish the revolving fund.
Right. And we're just basically asking you if you're, if, you know, because the two options we kind of have right now are, are this, where you would get that stipend for plan review in, in, after town meeting, or what Carolyn had said, farming it out.
Do you have the answer tonight? Do you need the answer tonight?
How about-
I don't think so.
But I heard, I heard something else. Can we give, can we just plain say, "Look, we're gonna give you an additional thousand dollars each for plan review," this budget? We can vote-
Within, within the operating budget.
Right.
Yeah, sure, you could do that.
Can I interrupt? I mean, they need to get some apparatus out of the garage here. There's a bunch of cars parked in the lane.
Oh, God.
So, if, if any vehicles blocking the garage could get moved, please?
So, if people have parked, like, from the-
Yeah, it's just in the middle.
Okay.
There is another meeting downstairs.
I don't know. I don't know where you parked it.
Jim, Jim, are you down here? Jim, could you, could you check downstairs, too, because some of the folks meeting downstairs might be parked there?
Okay.
Thank you.
So, do you, do you want to think about it and talk, and we can talk on Tuesday?
I'd like to think about it, but I can't-
About whether to farm it out, or whether you, you mind doing the site review?
I think the problem is, no matter what, we still didn't have to look at them.
See, that's, that's what I was thinking.
Take the time and have to go through these things and look at them.
That's what I was thinking, because you're gonna have to just review the work that they did, too. And, and you know what? It's, Rich, it's what you said before. You're ultimately responsible.
Absolutely.
You know?
But it's a big job, you know? We're gonna be there a lot. They can't wait for us to say, "No, I'll be over there tomorrow."
I'm just talking about the plan review right now. Do you want somebody else doing the plan review and then you having to catch up on it?
I think we're gonna get stuck looking at it anyway, so you might as well let us look at it.
That's what I'm thinking.
So, as far as farming it out, I just don't, it's like, it's being redone.
So, what if we were to say a thousand dollars each for the, for the inspectors as an additional stipend to do the plan reviews?
Well, I wouldn't want to do that till, see how many hours.
Yeah, I want, I want them to keep track of their hours.
Okay, you want them to keep track of it.
So, as long as they're okay with, they wouldn't get paid until after the revolving fund.
Yeah, we can't pay you till May.
If you're okay with that.
Our apologies. We didn't act when we should have acted, and-
Now, like Bill said, can the town meeting shoot it down?
I've never seen a town meeting not vote to establish a revolving fund, but anything's possible.
But they're not voting to, about-
They're not-
-whether to pay you or not. It's just to create the fund.
Oh, okay.
It's just, it's just the accounting part of it.
Why, do you have a lot of enemies, Rich?
Make sure you go to the town meeting.
I've been in forty years in the business. I think I made a few.
Yeah, that's true.
So, okay, so-
So-
I think we may, like, in that part of it, for now, we've kind of, have we come to an agreement on that part of it?
That sounds fine. Andy, do you need a motion of some sort?
Yeah, we, we still don't know what we're gonna pay them, or what the rate's gonna be.
All right. I'll tell you what, then.
So, we need to figure that out, but-
Why don't you meet-
Philosophically, I think.
You meet with Rich over the week, please. This goes on the agenda next, for next week, because it needs to be settled. Now, in terms of the building inspector, I have to say that I've thought a lot about this, and my inclination is that if somebody's a salaried employee, they take whatever the job is. That's how it is in business. And when Chief Marshall is down to patrolman, he might take a shift himself. And we don't-
I didn't mean to argue about that.
This is what you heard. You spoke to me, no, I guess.
And, and we don't, and we don't give him more money for taking that shift. That, that's how salaried jobs are. And sometimes you do a little more, and sometimes you do a little less. And, and that's, that's basically how I look at a salaried position. However, I know this is, this is a big project. I mean, I, I'd be willing to, to not increase, not increase the salary certainly, because that's a whole other ball of wax, but I would be willing to, to look at like a yearly stipend that we would give to the building commissioner in addition to his, his salary during the course of the, the project.
I mean, I never thought it was, I mean, I always thought it would be some sort of, because of the building inspector's salary-
But I don't want-
We'd have to do, we'd have to figure out some sort of stipend for it.
I don't want him to have to figure out his hours and all of that happy stuff.
Right. I mean, because he's here a lot more, it's harder for the building inspector to do that.
Well, the other thing is, that reality is, he might find that he wants to even change his hours during this project. It might make it easier on him to do that, you know? And that's entirely up to him. He's a salaried employee. He can, he can do that, you know? And, and I want to give him that flexibility. It's, you know?
Well, we can't pay a full-time employee out of a revolving fund, so that's gonna have to be something that's put into a budget. So, if, if that's the case, we're going to have to do some type of contract negotiations with him to, to give him an additional stipend for the duration of the job. You can't pay Rich a stipend amount out of the revolving. It's not there for full-time employees. Is that correct, Andy? I believe, I read the law.
I'd have to check into that. I'm not sure.
Actually, didn't you give us a copy of the law?
Okay, so-
It may be that you, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
On that topic, it may be that you can't, you can't co-mingle general fund plus revolving fund.
Says, "No revolving fund expenditure shall be made for the purpose of paying any wages or salaries for full-time employees unless such revolving fund is also charged for the cost of fringe benefits associated with the wages or salaries we pay," which is not-
But I'm not suggesting that this is a wage, or, it's not a salary. It's a stipend.
Well, we could certainly look into the legalities of it.
Yeah. Well, I, I think the, the important part of what that says is the second part, which has to do with fringe benefits. So, we would, in order to pay a portion of a salary out of-
You have to pay proportionate.
You have to pay a portion of the benefits, assess the revolving, which is not the end of work.
I, I don't want to-
Do that with the enterprise.
I don't want to, what's the other alternative? Have him keep track of his hours on the project?
No, we come to a, we come to an amount that we want to, whatever we decide to give him for the duration of the project since budgeted into the annual budget on a separate temporary or other work or whatever, it's tracked separately.
Out, oh, and, and comes in from the building committee check?
It would be appropriated in, in the budget.
Appropriated in the budget to be paid out of the building committee assessment. Appropriated in the budget to be paid out of the building committee assessment?
No, it would come out of the general.
When you do, when you put.
Right, but then put back. Exactly.
So.
So it's a revolving fund that isn't a revolving fund?
Yes.
So we got a whole plethora of things, wordly wise, got that from Eric, of things that we need to talk about on Tuesday. So, and I'm just going to, so that we're all on the same page. Andy is going to work with the inspectors about, so I think it's premature. With Rich, and I'm sure that the stipend inspectors will have, want to have their voices heard. I think it's premature to come up with the amount tonight that we're going to charge as the initial assessment, since we don't know the rate or.
The plan?
No, for the whole.
Oh, okay.
Thing. So I, and also we need to work, Andy is going to have to check, or somebody, the accountant is going to check on the legality of how do we compensate Rich? Is that, am I missing anything? Carolyn, is there anything?
No.
Anything else? Okay.
I mean, I think Carolyn's suggestion for the, you know, appropriating a separate line that in essence works like a revolving fund.
Yeah, because he's going to have.
That goes away after the project's done.
You can't, he has to have a stipend, so the way we did it before when he oversaw more halls, it was a contract amendment, so we got, what was it, Rich? 500 a week? 500 a week additional for the duration of the project.
So I think that if the rest of the board is comfortable with, you know, Andy working with parties involved on those three items?
Yeah, come back to us with all the solutions, all right? So we can just vote on them?
Well, that was easy.
Okay.
Bring the easy button.
Okay. And we'll bill you.
Yeah, just, the budget's $351.
Yes, we know that.
$251.
Then we got to go back to town meeting and get a change.
And if the change, what it doesn't go through town meeting. It's right, I was just scanning $51,000, probably get divided out evenly in the call in a day. And you can't go back.
I think that's the cleanest way, though.
Well, again, you guys, I'm just, I'm just telling you what the budget is.
I'll be honest with you. The other, the other thing is that to be accountable to the town and to the taxpayers, I think it's fairer for us to keep track of hours and that way it's justified. These are hours worked and you're paying for hours worked. I think it, it sounds better. I think, I think it's a better way to say.
I just look at it, the funds were already appropriated, the funds have been voted on, the funds are there. So now, as most projects, not all projects, but most projects, the timeframe always runs over. Most projects, before you even started, we might as well take in that 15% right off the top to the project because that's where most of them come in at, 15 to 20% overage. So if that's the case, the amount of time, effort and everything else, I know we have a fixed number, but just saying as a norm that.
Well, there'll be lots of people, there'll be lots of people that'll be fighting to get that all in line.
I may want to, I may give these back. 50% over.
Okay, yeah, I might leave town.
They're, they're, also, I mean, at the end of this project, there's a lot of auditing that the state's going to do for justice, for justice purposes. They call it out of the code.
Yeah, I mean, I just think it's cleaner to show hours worked, hours paid for hours worked. You know, it's all above board, you know, out in front for the public to see. Okay? Okay? Well, thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to the building commissioner and the inspectors because I.
We're only 45 minutes behind schedule.
Okay, 2.2, curbside solid waste collection, discussion of procurement for collection of solid waste. Board of Health and Finance Committees have been invited. We have the whole Board of Health here?
No, we're missing Michelle.
Oh, that's right, yeah. And who we've got?
Seven layers on.
FinCon's here. Wow. Good job. Okay. Go ahead. Thank you.
We're going to have to flip it on and off a couple more times during our meeting.
Yeah, I know.
Is this where it gets up to 80 now?
As people, as people move in and out, flip it out.
That's the plan.
Yes.
Yeah, well, we'll see if we make up some time, we're 45 minutes behind schedule.
Maybe we'll make it colder in there, everybody will go to the house.
Keep them awake.
Chris, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Going to give us the highlights of this?
Yes, and I'll try.
Highlighting Rich's version?
I will try and make up on the 45 minutes we're behind. So the Board of Health, mostly Jim and Tessa, have been putting in a lot of work to put together a request for proposal that we would like to put out for the trash and recycling contracts. Of course, cost is always a big issue. We're aware of that. So the way we structured the request for proposal is we were looking at a three-year option, a five or a 10-year, because working with Shaw's in the past, we've always gotten the feedback that the longer you can design a contract for, the better numbers they can get. So what we're asking for in the request for proposal, and this is for all of them, a three, a five and a 10-year. So first is what we have right now, which is trash every week at the 64 gallon and unlimited recycling every other week. So it'd be exactly like it is now. And then one of the, one of the other options we're looking at is to do recycling every week.
Okay, so let me just stop you for a second.
Yeah.
You're going to get prices on all of these à la carte, if you will?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, I knew that was what people liked.
So it's very, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it's very similar to the last contract that.
Last RFP?
The last RFP that went out. So basically what we've done is just try and add in some options that we thought would make our collection service better for the town. I know that, you know, at least at my house, I end up with a lot of recycling, doing it every other week. We'd really like to go to every week to try and encourage that recycling. But like I said, we're looking at all these different options and getting, like you say, an à la carte price on, on all our different options. So then some of the other stuff we got into was having the hauler provide toters. So every resident would get one for the trash and one for the recycling. And that would be the 64 gallon.
How big are the toters?
We're looking at 64 gallon.
So that's like twice as big as the barrel that I put.
Yeah, so they're fatter and usually just a little bit taller on wheels, so you don't have to carry it.
I just had a question. Are all the proposals for 64 gallons?
Yes.
None of them are returning it back to the higher amount?
And they are, because not without the toters.
So without, without the toters, there would be the option to go, you know, with the residents were providing their own like we are now.
Okay.
But the, the toters that we're asking for would be 64 gallon.
But the actual amount of trash someone could put out every week would, is 64?
Right, unless they buy the overflow bags.
Okay.
Which, you know, if you have that need, it would be there.
Is there a reason you're asking for toters? I mean, does that save money?
It's generally, and Jim does, can speak to it, but it just makes it cleaner and makes it more fair, because everybody's using the same containers.
But how much do we pay for being more fair?
You won't know until it comes back.
Typically, do we know how much toters add to that? Because didn't we talk about that?
Yeah, we talked about it.
And that's, that's, just before we get, and the toter option is going to be one of those things that if we go with a longer contract, that with a three-year contract, it's not going to make any sense. We need to go to a longer contract to make that make sense. Because you're looking at, what, 8,000 containers? Yeah, so it's almost 400,000 between recycling and trash ones. And that's why if you're going to do a three-year contract, that's never going to make sense.
So what you would be talking about is 400,000 over the course of 10 years?
Yes.
10-year contract?
Right.
Or absorbed in some other costs.
Yeah. So. And then, Jim, if you want to speak to the bulky stuff?
Excuse me, can I add to what you just said?
Yes, yeah.
The two toters are going to be different sizes. A 64 gallon will be for the trash and it'll be a 96 gallon for the weekly recycling. So that the recycling container is going to be larger so that you can put a lot more recycling in. And another catch to this is by doing it this way.
Well, Jim, the way it's written up right now, they're both 64. So if you wanted to change that, we'd have to make that amendment.
You know what happened when it went to weekly? We were talking about the 96, if it was every other week, but then when it went to, we were looking at the weekly, every single week recycling, that's when you said, oh, then a 64 would work.
Okay, unfortunately, I missed that one because I bothered, anyway, that doesn't have to be discussed right now. And where are you going? Oh, the.
The bulkies.
The bulkies biannually, which would be, I believe we discussed, after Memorial and at the Labor Day. Households that have to get rid of something big, where nobody has large vehicles anymore, not everybody has a pickup truck. So if you had a refrigerator, chest freezer, whatever bulky stuff you have that had to go, they go around on a given day, twice a year, would do notice to the public and pick up the bulkies.
At cost to the people or?
This would be in the contract that they're responsible for it. So it would be all part of the trash contract, so.
So if I had a small refrigerator, an old freezer?
And you put it on the side of the road?
And I put it there, they would pick it up? Would I pay any extra for them picking it up? Because I do today to bring it to the recycle center, don't, don't I?
Yes.
So there's no charge for them to dispose of that?
Yes.
It would be in the contract.
It would be part of, it would be asked, there's a separate, it's à la carte, but there would be a question about if you included that, what would that total cost be?
Okay, so we really don't know the answer to that question until it comes back.
This is being brought in front of everybody so that everybody knows that we're doing work on this vigorously. We want to go out and get bids to come back in as to as what we're proposing, see what the numbers are, and when they return, then the board can make a decision as to what we feel is the best for towns. And that'll make a big improvement on our roadways, our rivers, our brooks, our streams, because we're going to eliminate a lot of stuff that gets blown around.
And, and just before we get to a huge money thing, we stuck with the basic services we have now because, you know, if the town doesn't feel they want to pay more to have a fancy toter, I don't want to have that argument.
Okay, that's why you did the à la carte.
Yeah, that's why I don't want to get into, well, why do I have to have a barrel that's too big? I don't put out that much trash.
When are you going to have the bids back?
Waiting for legal review, finished.
Right, we'll be sending it off to town council for their review, which I don't think will take all that long.
We were.
I don't remember what the schedule was.
We were looking at if. Yeah, we were hoping to be able to advertise it on the 16th of this month and give them about a month to develop their proposals. And then after we get them back, about a month worth of evaluations and then a couple weeks of negotiations. So my other question.
Where's that put us in terms of town meeting?
So that's my question. So we had, we were looking tentatively at a contract award in May, on May 11th. When is the town meeting in May?
The first week.
It's the first week of May. So. Okay. So my, my question would be if, would we be able, if we have an option that is going to bring us into the five or 10-year, that might provide us some savings, would we have time to bring that to town meeting and then still get this awarded in May?
I would level fund your budget as it exists now, bring it into FY '16. And then if you're looking at an additional appropriation, that would be a fall town meeting where it's been pushed back this far, you know?
I don't know. Andy?
Yeah, I think that's a little, a little dangerous. I think you'll, I think you'll have enough time. You're going to, you're not going to want to award before town meeting.
No.
So you're going to want to receive the proposals, go through them, decide what you like.
Yeah.
If there's, you know, if there's a proposal that, whatever one you like the best or you think is the most advantageous to the town, that amount would go into the budget that goes to town meeting. Unless there's a desire for a standalone article on curbside, it would just be based on the budget appropriation.
Okay.
So if it's, if it's level funded and you, you know, if, if the board decides you don't want to go higher than what, than the 629 that you have now for curbside, and you get a couple of proposals that come in under that, then you decide which one you want to go with.
Okay.
We fund that one accordingly. And then you make, then the two boards would make the contract award after town meeting is done.
Because we're, we're now basically at the top of our trash budget as we sit. So even if we don't make a change, even if there's no options added, just our regular increase in our, you know, the consumer price index is going to put us over what we're paying this year and over that budget. So how, what?
But let's say it's, it's the budget this year plus 2.5%. What that, what that bring us to? Just saying 2.5% is typically, is our limit.
Say it's 640.
But that might change too, when you get the prices back. If you're doing a five to 10-year deal, you might have sufficient money in your.
Yeah.
So it really depends on all the numbers that come back, so you can review them as.
I guess the, the concern that I have is that you have time to do all of that and be able to communicate that to the, to the town for the town meeting. You know, you might want to have the regular budget item for the base.
Yeah.
And then put another article if there was something additional that you, that you wanted.
You could catch up, you could take no action if there was no action needed.
It's just a time, yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just a question for the board. Since you're talking about wanting to go to recycling every week.
Yes.
Have you looked into a single stream?
Oh, yes, so that's one of the things we're going to do, is build a single stream.
Any other questions? The finance committee's here. FinCon.
What do you mean by single stream?
Everything's put into one trash and then pulled out and recycling is pulled out of there.
No, 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 no.
Single stream recycling.
Say, I'm sorry, single stream recycling is when your paper and your co-mingled all go together, because currently we separate paper and the containers. We weren't going to go a single stream where all your trash and recycling's in one, you'd still have.
Oh, okay. Well, you were just saying you're doing, you want to go to weekly recycling and weekly that, so why aren't you looking at that option then? Is there, there's a reason, but.
Businesses.
It's trash and it's recycling. Single stream recycling is putting all your recycling together and then they sort it out, but you always have separate trash.
I don't have chicken.
Hold on, Jim?
Yes, all the big, all the big towns, Pittsburgh, Memphis, for all the people that all have their dual recycling, they've got their 64 gallon garbage or whatever you want to call it, and they've got their, uh, single stream recycling in a logic container. And I've driven truck around the entire state, I've seen it all in all the different cities and towns, and it works very, very efficiently and effectively.
So, but you still keep, you keep your recycling in a separate container?
Correct, yes.
It's just that you don't have to separate.
Your paper.
From the cans.
Exactly, it's just rid of all the nuisance. And that's also going to supposedly help our tipping fees on our regular trash. They should keep the trash down because on a bi-weekly recycling, a lot of people put recyclings in the trash right now. put recyclings in the trash right now.
Well, I hope they don't do that.
Well, unfortunately, we know that does, that does happen.
I certainly hope they don't do that.
Carla has gone around, and Carla's seen it.
So.
I think it's gonna be a lot easier for the residents to have a trash and a recycle container. They both go out the same time every week. You're not gonna have that extra container, so the resident who says, geez, I really don't want to rinse this out, do I have to separate this? Is it recycle week, is it not?
I think that that's, that's a person that just needs to be taught a little bit differently about what recycling is.
We've been working on that vigorously, so really.
You know, because it makes absolutely no sense to me.
Cal has done a good job with that one.
I just save it until the next week, you know, but...
Yep.
I just wanted to say, you know, we really appreciate you trying to get prices and all these different options, because it gives you an idea, you know. You can tell folks we looked into that, and it's very well-written, and Tessa, it's good out there.
Yeah, so thank you to Tessa.
I just wanted a timeline of when we get it back from council, because I don't want it to be delayed any further.
Yeah, I think it really is important that we...
Yeah, I didn't want to, I didn't want to send it to council before the board had seen it, and at least conceptually was on the same page, so we'll get it out this week.
Yeah. So we could get it back to you guys by next Tuesday? Do you think that's reasonable?
Thank you, Chair. I just had a question. What's the official name for the barrels that we're talking about?
They're toters.
All right. The only reason I know is that in other municipalities, when they put their bids out, I believe one of the reasons they go standard size toters is that, one, you can go into single operator trucks, so that'd be cost savings. And the second is when they bid, if they're going through single operate trucks that are mechanical, their workman's comp rate will be less, so they can reflect the savings to the town twofold. So you cut down personnel, one person a truck, which would be substantial savings. Second of all, that their workman's comp, as everyone knows, is a constant factor that we can't control. They can control that, because insurance gets too lucky here that you're not lifting 200-pound barrels, the machine does it. And I believe, I'm not an expert, who people are, the back of those barrels, that steel bar is there, so that mechanically, am I correct about that?
That's what type?
So those would be two ways to, as you people are trying to keep the bottom line bottom, I believe it would be a...
So is that the type that we're looking at?
We're not restricting them as to what they will produce.
We get an option of them...
But they, but what all he said is true, that they're motivated by workers' comp.
And if you notice from other municipalities, if they do something, sometimes there's a reason they do that.
Yeah.
And I think that's, thank you for your word.
We talked about that, I think, the last time you guys were looking into that, or delving into that.
So, and then...
Although my heart kind of breaks anytime I talk about anything mechanical or computerized, taking over human beings' jobs. My heart breaks a little bit for those people whose jobs might be lost.
The bags won't be playing, though, the machines lift them.
Somebody else had a question?
Ginny in the back.
Ginny?
I would think it'd be beneficial if we get reeducated on recycling every once in a while. You know, I want to recycle to the best of my ability, but sometimes I like, is it or isn't it? You know, so I think continually, once in a while, educating the public about recycling.
Colin?
And I know you folks have done that in the past, when you've sent out flyers and, you know, told people, and email blasts, and all that kind of jazz about trying to explain what's recycling, what can go in the bins, what can't, what has to go to devils, all that sort of thing, so...
But I think a little reminder once in a while.
We have, every door direct mailing that's going out this week. So, and we had it on the website, we have it on the front page of the website, and it was also in the newspaper, big color, Colorado. So, we're trying.
And part of, and part of the contract is to have the hauler, was it once a year? So once a year, they need to send out an informational mailing to people as well to tell them, you know, what goes in which container, so...
Andy?
Just a quick question for Tessa. What's the, is there any impact on the value of recyclables when you go from separated to, to single stream? Or is, or is it all sort of comes out in the wash?
There's a lot of discussion going on at the state now, because the state is very much, very interested in single stream, but unfortunately, what they're finding is there's a lot of contamination on the material that comes out for the users, the recyclers, when they separate it out, because obviously you can't make paper from glass or glass with paper. So the co-mingling of them has introduced more contamination and more waste in there. So there's, this jury's still out, is because what the hope was, that there'd be a lot more volume, and it's really close. It's not totally clear, one way or the other, that we're getting a lot more recycling because those two have been put together. The manufacturers are screaming, the ones who recycle.
I would think that they would, because it's not gonna be as clean.
So it's a struggle.
Which means they lose money.
Yes.
I'm just concerned about the timeline, so it's gonna have to move along real quickly.
Actually, Tessa built in a lot of time in the negotiations and whatnot, so I think we should, as long as we can get it out fairly soon, you know, our original date was the 16th, so if we can look at something like that, we'll have, we'll have plenty of time to review it.
I just want to make sure that you're gonna have enough time to communicate to the public what the different options that you think, that you're recommending would be, and why.
When the proposals come out, we'll sit down and...
And then we have to, and then if it's above the, you know, the normal increase, then everybody has to sit together and figure out, well, how are we gonna pay for that, too? Or are we willing to pay for that?
Yeah, if you're willing to, and that's, that's a big part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sue, can we get a five-minute recess?
We can.
I hope we shaved enough time off.
Thank you. Hartley, five minutes, please. Thank you.
Thanks, Tessa.
Welcome back. The next item on the agenda, 2.3, review and approve the request of Police Chief Irving M. Marshall, Jr. to appoint the following to the Townsend Police Department. Mike Giancotti?
Mark.
Mark, I'm sorry, as lieutenant for a term through June 30th, 2015, contingent on negotiating a contract. Kimberly Mattson as sergeant for a term from January 27th, 2015, to June 30th, 2015. Randy Gerard as sergeant for a term from January 28th, 2015, to June 30th, 2015.
Do I have a motion, or would the chief like to?
Yeah, just briefly. Mark Giancotti, you all know these people, they've been around for a while.
They're as long as some of us, but...
Mark's been with us for 19 years, he's 12 years as a sergeant, and he has a lot of attributes. He has a master's degree in criminal justice, and a lot of attributes that make him good for the, good pick for the lieutenant's position. Randy and Kim have 36 years of service between them, and they scored first and second. In an assessment center that seven members of the department took, were involved in, and, and Kim's gonna be working day shift, and Randy will be working the evening shift. And I think you know that we're in a somewhat of a transition period within the police department, getting a little older, and we've had a couple of retirements lately. One in July, Cheryl Mattson, Stevenson Mattson, and David Proffitt in December, so pretty key positions in the department, with Mark being appointed as lieutenant left another sergeant's position open, and, and, which is why we have, we have requested two appointments here tonight. So with that all said, I think we've made some good choices here, and I would ask that the board support my decision for these appointments.
Chair, I would move that we appoint Mark Giancotti as lieutenant for the Townsend Police Department for a term, for a term through June 30th, 2015, contingent upon contract negotiations.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would move that we appoint Kimberly Mattson as sergeant for the Townsend Police Department for a term effective January 27th, 2015, to June 30th, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And lastly, I would appoint, I would move that we appoint Randy Gerard as sergeant for a term effective January 28th, 2015, to June 30th, 2015.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Thank you.
If we could, I'd like to actually ask their, the choice of the people that they brought here with them to actually pin them, and I would ask that the clerks with them to respect.
The town clerk is here.
Do you want to pin them first, or?
I think that would be appropriate, sure.
Why don't you face the audience, because they're the ones that want to see you guys. All right, Jack, Jack, with the mama.
Nope, sorry. Cal, get in there. Get in there.
Gonna get one with mom? This is, this is their moment.
Oh, come on, mom. Yeah.
Can I have to turn around and face? This way? You guys face me, and then be facing each other. Raise your right hands and retreat after me. I state your names.
Aye, Mark Giancotti.
Disobediently affirm?
Disobediently affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially?
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform?
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me?
All the duties incumbent on me.
As...
As lieutenant.
For the Townsend Police Department?
For the Townsend Police Department.
According to the best of my abilities and understanding?
According to the best of my abilities and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations?
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution?
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of this common law?
And the laws of this common law.
This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury.
This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Very good.
Thank you. Yes, sorry. Thank you.
I just wanted to congratulate Mark Giancotti and Randy Gerard, but I wanted to especially congratulate Kim, who I've known my entire life. I think we actually were on the same school bus growing up. And it really makes me happy to see someone of my generation who has risen through the ranks of the Townsend Police Department, so I really, congratulations.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for what you do for us.
All right. Quick, move before the fire marshal comes.
All right, in your stand, honey?
Do you think they could leave an order leaving, unfortunately?
Who needs to take control?
It's town meeting.
You guys with the white gloves, can you like do traffic control?
See you May 5th at town meeting.
We should have made him sign an agreement.
They would attend.
Yes.
Careful walking outside.
Congratulations.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Well, we can always, if it looks like there's a massive, we could always move out there.
I think it was cozy here. 2.4, we have an executive session pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Could I get a motion, motion on that? Madam Chair, I would move that we enter executive session pursuant to mass general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20A, 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel.
Second.
Moved and seconded, this require roll call vote, please.
Carolyn Smart, aye.
Colin McNabb, aye.
Sulisio, aye. And we'll be returning to...
You should have made that part of the motion, we'll be returning to open session.
So moved second and third.
Moved and amended and approved. Aye.
Colin McNabb, aye.
Aye, okay.
Chief, is Mark coming back?
Yes, he is.
Welcome back, back into the regular meeting. 3.1, update on Kinder Morgan Gas Pipeline Project. Andy?
Just a brief couple of updates on this project, not, not a whole lot to report. If you recall, the open house sessions that Kinder Morgan was hosting in area communities were canceled a couple of weeks ago, or they were, they were originally scheduled beginning in November, and then they changed project, rescheduled to a couple of weeks ago, and then we had the blizzard, and they canceled the first set of them. The first one was supposed to be, the new schedule was supposed to be tonight up in Ridge, but that got changed because of the, because of the storm yesterday. So there's a meeting tomorrow in Winchester, New Hampshire. Couple of other meetings coming up in the next couple of weeks in various places, not really around here. One, ones closest to Townsend are February 24th in Milford, New Hampshire, at the Hampshire Dome, and February 26th in Fitchburg, at the Fitchburg Middle School Gymnasium. So the information is on the town's website, so if anybody wants to look at that, just go to the main page, click on, in the middle of the page, there's a section on the pipeline project, and there's a direct link to the, to the open house schedule, so nothing else to report on the project at this point.
Okay, the one thing I was going to ask my colleagues to think... Okay, the one thing I was going to ask my colleagues to think about was, it's, it's very difficult for me to make it to Monday meetings, which is when the coalition always meets. So could you guys think about whether or not you want to take my place on that?
When is it? When are the?
Typically, Monday mornings. Nine o'clock, Andy?
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock?
Yeah, it's a crummy time, but
And you work.
I work too. I can't.
All right, well, then we're going to have to just rely on you to go to the meetings, Andy. I'm sorry, I just, I have other
Yeah, and I go as I, you know, there's a few that I've had to miss, but I try to get there. You know, when they're in the area, sometimes Leslie Gerbilsky goes as well.
Oh, that's right.
So she's kind of a backup.
Well, that's the other thought. Could you, could you guys just think about it? Maybe we'll just put it on the agenda to talk about next time, because maybe we want to appoint somebody outside of the board.
Maybe Leslie.
Conservation.
Yeah.
Or somebody from the Conservation Commission.
But to be our representative. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
Okay. Andy, can we put that on the, the agenda, please, for next, next time? Okay, 3.2, discuss process for selectmen to follow when requesting information, et cetera. I actually did up a draft of what I thought we could use for a policy. Can we just pass over this one, and I'll get it to you guys during the week?
Sure.
Okay? Packet information for next week. 3.3, Townsend Home Rule Charter. This has come up a couple of times in our discussions. This really relates to what we go back and forth on a lot, which is day-to-day administration, and what does that actually mean? I really think that if we don't do it, we're going to end up paying for it to be clarified with, within the charter review process anyway. I thought it might be good to just solicit a legal opinion on that.
I'm not sure where the confusion comes in.
Well, I don't want to talk about it. I just want to, because, because it doesn't matter, because that's not what's on here.
That's fine, I have no
Okay? Do you have a problem with?
No, but isn't the attorney coming to the charter?
Yeah, we're going to be, we're going to be paying him for that.
Definitely want to clarify.
So either way, we're paying the attorney for an opinion.
And that way, you can look at the whole wording in them.
Okay, I'm okay with that. We'll put it off until the charter has the review.
I think it should be clarified for any future.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that. Okay, thanks. I just wanted the chance to talk about it.
Yeah, there's no issues for me.
Okay, 3.4, review and approve change orders for Weston and Sampson Engineers for its contract for installation of the SCADA system at the water department. What is that system? Andy?
It's a computerized system that links all of the components of the water system to a central location, so they can check remotely what the volume in the storage tanks are, what the pressure is in the lines.
So like a monitoring system?
Monitoring system.
Okay.
But all linked, all remote.
I just couldn't remember.
We reviewed this in capital planning, God, a couple of years ago now, I think. I don't remember what we talked about, but I remember it was really neat.
So is this a credit?
This one is a credit, yeah. We, we approved a change order last meeting.
That's my thought.
This one is a, it's a change order in the, in the direction that, you don't usually see change orders.
Yeah, this is okay. I like this. Do I have a motion?
This is what I had asked about the last time, the credit, so the lawyer said we do, we do have to accept it even if it's a credit, because it's a change order, right?
Well, it's cleaner, it leaves a paper trail.
Yeah, I know we had done it before, but we do like the credits. So I would move that we approve the change order for Weston Sampson Engineers for its contract for installation of the SCADA system at the water department for a credit in the amount of $1,109.49.
Second.
Don't forget that 49 cents. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3.5, review and discuss vehicle assignment policy. 3.5, this one I have to look at. Andy?
Yeah, there's a, there's an additional memo in front of you tonight that was not in your packets. Just summarizing.
Oh, I know, that's the one that I stuck in here thinking that I misplaced it, but it was here.
So in the, in the packet that I gave you last week, or now, two weeks ago, there was a copy of the, of the Board of Selectmen Vehicle Assignment Policy.
Andy, we're missing one here, but
It's a memo for me, it has a 3.5 at the top.
Yeah, we have one copy between the two of us, there was just one here. Oh, wait a minute, no, this is the Does that have to say?
He's got revised here. I have it, yep.
So in the, in the packet that you got a week and a half ago, was a copy of the vehicle assignment policy and a copy of a memo that I sent to Paul Rayfews at the water department.
Right.
And then after we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, the board asked me to come up with a list of all the vehicles that are taken home by employees, and that's in the memo tonight, under today's date, with 3.5 at the top. So there's currently one at the police department, which is the chief, but the lieutenant or deputy chief historically has, has taken one home. Fire department, it's the chief only. Highway department, it's the superintendent and the foreman, and in the water department, it's the superintendent. And as we talked about before, the on-call mechan, technicians, whoever happens to be on-call, given, given time period, is allowed to take a vehicle home, but historically, they do not. They simply choose to take their own vehicle. If they get called in, they just drive in in their own vehicle, they go to the shop, they pick up the truck, whichever truck they need, and respond to the, to the issue, so.
So that's it? That was just to give us that information, right?
We were going to, did you, I know last time we discussed reviewing it, did you have any changes you wanted? Did you look over the vehicle assignment policy?
I, Carolyn, I
I don't have any issues with the current existing
I don't either.
I mean, it's, it's like the, you know, I know that you had brought up a couple of instances that you disagreed with people having vehicles, taking them home, but I mean, the, you know, obviously the water technicians can take them home if they have to.
Well, they've, they've never been assigned, that's where it gets confusing. Andy is letting them take home, but they've never been assigned. That was what I was talking
We're not really assigning a vehicle in that kind of situation.
Well, when they bring them home, though, when, when they get a vehicle, if it's on a temporary emergency situation, I would agree with you, but if they're taking them home on a consistent basis, which, which, for me, Andy says they're not, it was just a temporary situation, they have to be assigned.
Okay, so maybe if it happens, if anything like that should happen again, I don't have any problem with the town administrator giving permission, as long as it's clearly spelled out on a temporary basis, or, you know, this is a temporary situation. Well, I mean, I don't care, I don't need to know.
Well, I kind of do, because if people contact me about it, I don't know.
Well, in front of Andy, it's fine. You don't have, I don't have to know every little thing that goes on.
I mean, I understand that's how you like to do, but, you know, the people elected me, and I like to have answers. I like to know what's going on, so
Well, I don't know, I was
Chief, when, when your patrolmen go to lunch, do they drop the cruiser off at the station, then drive their personal car home?
I mean, I think, I think we're getting hung up on assignment, take-home. I mean, if a vehicle's assigned to someone, then it, they, it's assigned to them.
Yeah, that's right.
And they take it home. I mean, they're allowed to take vehicles home, but not for, like, a take-home purpose. So I think we're kind of getting a little bit hung up on the verbiage, maybe, a little bit.
Well, the vehicle assignment policy really has nothing to do with employees taking vehicles home on a temporary basis.
And like I've explained, I've had employees take vehicles home, and I've allowed them to do that, under specific circumstances, but they're not assigned a vehicle as a take-home vehicle.
Right, yeah. So maybe that was just, it was I, I understand, Carolyn, how it might have appeared, especially if somebody called and complained about it, you know, but hopefully from now on, just a simple call to Andy will solve it.
Yeah, on the, the issue that came up recently with the water department, the policy is clear that the assignment of vehicles for 24-hour use is made by the town administrator. And one of the reasons, or one of the criteria is on-call status. And so the memo was, memo from November 26th was specifically to the water department, and specifically for employees who are on-call. So the, the memo that I wrote was, was completely consistent with the policy.
Well, actually, this is for assigning vehicles. Again, that's a temporary situation, so that really wouldn't apply with the assignment of vehicles, per se. However, and if you look above, it's the appointing authorities who have municipal vehicles available for the purpose. You absolutely have to give them written authorization before they can utilize it.
I think, I think that that paragraph's misleading because it says assignment. I think the intent here, when you read it, is it's a temporary thing, it's what the chief said.
Actually, I wrote it, and that, and temporary bringing home vehicles had absolutely nothing to do with that policy.
Okay, well, maybe we should work on the wording there.
That's why I didn't know, you know, I don't have a problem with it, but you guys seem
Yeah, I think it, it
I think it's clear that if you're on-call, you can
If you're signed.
I don't
No, I, I don't, I think it's two separate things.
This is like the fourth time we've discussed this.
Two separate
There is no fire here, there's not even smoke. Can we please make a decision or a motion to decide whether we just move on, or are we going to totally rewrite this, or what?
What, what do you think about it?
I thought we had all agreed, this policy is for the assignment of vehicles.
But that's not what I'm hearing in the interpretation of this, this little piece of it. Andy's interpreting it one way, you're interpreting it another. To me, that means we need to clarify it.
Okay.
Colin, do we need to clarify that?
I'm not confused, or I don't need clarification.
How do you read it?
I think that the entire course of action thus far, all the questions that have been asked and answered are consistent. I mean, I just, I think that we're boarding on ridiculousness, and I want to move on.
Can I ask a question? If I work for the water department and I'm not on-call, I don't take a truck home. If I work for the water department and I'm on-call, I take the truck home, right?
Right.
Okay, if I'm
You can.
You can.
I can if I want to. If I'm the chief of police, I get a car assigned to me. If I'm the fire chief, I get a car assigned to me. If I'm the highway superintendent, I get a car assigned to me. If I'm a foreman at the highway department, I get a truck assigned to me. If I'm not one of those things, I don't get a vehicle, right?
Except
Except.
Except in an emergency situation.
In an emergency situation, okay. So I, I think the policy is clear. I heard it the first time, tonight. I think, I think the policy is
I'm fine, leave it to say, leave it the way that it is, and I think Andy's interpretation of it is fine. Andrea?
In the case of the water department, this individual wrecked his car and didn't have a vehicle to drive, and was therefore given a water department vehicle to drive for personal use. Now, does that constitute, under your emergency that you just said?
That's a good question. Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you.
He didn't have a vehicle, and he was on-call. In order for him to be on-call, he needed to get back and forth, if he did get called.
He, he, yes.
I don't care what the reason was, he needed a vehicle.
He, he was on-call, so therefore he didn't get a temporary
I, I, I understand, I understand that. I didn't think that, though, that he was on-call when he wrecked his vehicle and that was issued to him. I believe that Mr. Rayfews
He took the car, he was given permission to bring the car home because he was on-call and didn't have a vehicle. That's what we talked about last time. Andy?
My understanding from talking with Paul Rayfews is that it has long been the practice in the water department, that if you're on-call, you have access to a water department vehicle. It's simply a case where the, where the two technicians, by their personal choice, decided that they would rather go back and forth in their own vehicle, vehicles. This individual, I, I don't know what the circumstances are with his vehicle. I know it was out of commission for a week or so, when he was on-call, so it made sense to allow him to take a vehicle.
It does, but then if he doesn't have a vehicle, he obviously then used this one for personal use as well.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't draw that conclusion.
Oh, in, in the week, he didn't need to go to the store or anywhere, but on-call.
I'm not going to draw that conclusion.
That's fine, that's
I think, I think, I think that borders on accusing somebody of something that
Yeah.
that we have no proof of, so. No, I'm sorry, Andrea, I'm not going to listen to it, I will not discuss it, thank you.
It was in personal use.
Okay, we're going to move on. 3.6, review and approve one-day liquor license for John King in care of friends of the Townsend Library
You're up.
For a charity event at the Townsend Public Library slash Meeting Hall, 12 Dudley Road, on February 28th, 2015, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m.
I understand this was voted on last time.
Yes, it was. It was a split vote.
Yes.
And I Somebody want to make a motion?
No, I have something to say first.
Okay.
Okay. So I voted yes the last time. We developed a policy, and I was very supportive of it.
And we're glad we have a policy in place, thank you.
And
Well, well done, board.
And I appreciate it. However, after I voted yes in a conversation I had with, actually, I believe it was the building commissioner, he had mentioned that he had thought that the donor of that building wishes is that there was no alcohol in there. So I called and I confirmed. And out of honor and respect for the person who donated that building, I feel that I have to vote no on this particular license, which is a change from what I voted last time. However, I would support it in a different building, because if you complied with the policy that was crafted. So I just wanted
What does that mean, the policy should get changed? Because the way the policy reads right now, there isn't a consideration for that.
Yeah, that, that building would have to come off, though.
So
Well, somebody would have to make a motion and vote on it first.
I've discussed this with a couple people on both sides. The library's not going to be open, correct? School's not going to be in session, correct?
Correct.
Don't let them keep them after.
You're exactly It's a town-affiliated group?
Yes. The purpose of the group, according to our charter, is to raise funds for the library's use that isn't necessarily covered with their budget.
You would be getting a liability coverage, a one-day liability insurance?
Yes.
Correct? So
We were told, we were told that we didn't need an officer on duty. We did call and ask if, he thought we needed one, he said we didn't.
How long is the duration?
Three hours.
Three hours.
Three hours, 6 to 9.
So I'm in support of this, because it is trying to raise funds, it's a creative way of trying to raise funds for the, for the library senior center, or the library, or whatever. The schools are not in session, the library is not in session. They're going to have a liability coverage, so it doesn't open up the town to liability. You know, I'm, when I lived in Boston, I was very familiar with many charity events of this type. The question I have is, is there a venue of equal size that they could have it, another town-owned building that they could have it in?
No.
What about the Great Hall?
We can talk to our board about that and see what they have to say.
I would, I would support that, because you complied with the policy.
Yeah, and then that way, it kind of solves all the, and you're going to, I mean, it has ample parking, it's, it's a, it's a sizable room, you know. What do you think about bringing that back to your board?
We'll bring that back to the board and see what they have to say.
February 28th, huh?
Well, we might have to change the date.
Why don't we change the date now, because
Right. So when are you meeting next?
You don't have things already published for this.
No, we don't.
Well, we almost did.
We almost did.
When's your deadline to publish advertising?
It was going to be this week, but
Well, I mean, we're, we're meeting, and we're not, it's not like, we're meeting on Tuesday.
Right, right. So we, we would have to change our date at this point.
Yeah. There's not enough time to do that.
I mean, it just does seems like I, I'm okay with it, you two seem like you're not okay with it.
I mean, just
You know, the reason that I voted no was because I have consistently said I don't think that alcohol belongs in public buildings, all right? Since then, I kind of got a little jab thrown at me from someone. jab thrown at me from someone who's very familiar with public buildings. Turns out that even at the State House, you can have functions with alcohol.
They need it there.
Darn, that was a good comeback, I should've thought of that.
We need it here, too.
But anyway, no, no, we don't. But, but I don't, I don't wanna see you guys have to redo all your plans either, so. To those who I would, I would normally continue to vote no on this, but I'll, I'll go along with this one because it's for a good vote.
I think chairman.
Which?
The bottom one, municipal official.
Do I have to sign two places?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, 3.10.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the Chapter 90 final report for Emery Road in the amount of $264,504.50.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. 3.11.
I would move, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the Chapter 90 final report for Spalding Street in the amount of $5,784.26.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, buh 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 buh. 3.12, I think.
You'll wanna table it.
We're gonna table that till Sue can be here. 3.13, I stand next to, when I pursue into general law, Chapter 44 S-31D.
So these are all of you.
So Andy, on, on the snow and ice deficit, we've only voted once for 75,000, correct?
Correct.
So, I guess 75 to another 75 wouldn't be...
Uh, I'm actually recommending 125 on this one, because we're already, because of where we are in the winter, and we're already at negative 138. So you take the 75 out of that, that leaves us only, that leaves us 64, further in the negative. So we're certainly, we're certainly gonna go beyond that, so I think at this point, 125.
Yeah, we have the next two storms coming.
So, um, this is a point I was, this is something I was actually just gonna discuss, I had made reference to it in the beginning, when I had asked about our number.
Okay.
And this is more, it is gonna be a budgeting thing, but I just wanna say it before I forget about it.
Yeah.
Um, I think that it might be advantageous to try and increase the budget amount, so then we're, we're having to not have to rely on our free cash number as much.
Oh, for the snow and ice deficit?
For the snow and ice deficit, because we bumped it up last year, and I think that that, I think that might be advantageous for, for us, if, you know, if we've got the money.
So that was 125.
So 125 is what I'm recommending on this one.
I would move that we authorize deficit spending for snow and ice pursuant to master general law, Chapter 44, Section 31D, in the amount of additional 125,000.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Uh, 4.1, review and approve request of Energy Committee to appoint Brett Carney to the Energy Committee for, from a term from January 27th, 2015 to June 30th, 2015.
I would move that we appoint Brett Carney to the Energy Committee for a term, effective January 27th, 2015 to June 30th, 2015.
Second. Motion on 4.1 has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. 4.2, I think we should wait, do we need to wait for?
I'd like to move forward on this if we could, Colin, because it's, we lost time with the postponement of the town meeting, and so we're really in a, in a bind to fill the treasurer collector's position.
Okay, so...
Well, I don't know if we can.
Can I just, I did wanna say one thing. 4.2, on 4.2, Andy, you're recommending Kate Stacy, who's been filling the, the role, for how long?
Uh, since November of '13, so 14 months.
So I, I can just say for myself, and I'm sure that I'll get agreement from others, that I have been incredibly impressed with Kate Stacy, and that, as she's taken over the collector's office. Her abilities, in regards to productivity, are, I don't believe without reproach, are without reproach, and she's an incredible professional. I don't wanna even see any other candidates, so.
Well, me and Sue talked at the last meeting with us, came up, and we compromised on, Andy was gonna send us out three or four resumes for us to have feedback on. And the other thing that we had decided at the last meeting is the salary needs to be determined. And I noticed the posting was in, corrected on that. But, so we have those two specific issues. Now, I agree with you, Colin, I've worked with Kate, Kate's very well qualified, I know she doesn't have, or as far as I know, she doesn't have expense tax collected, but she works very close with Beth Anne, and I know that, that they've been working together on it. So it's not the person that I have an issue with, but again, we haven't set the salary, I haven't seen the additional resumes, like we compromised to, so. And, and the other, and the other thing too, Andy, I wanted to ask you, is the audit, did Terry perform an audit down there for the transition?
Uh, no, I spoke with Melanson Heath. It is, it is something that they're willing to do, if we wanna have them do it. It's a, it's a matter of, do we wanna, do we wanna incur the additional costs when they're in town to do the fiscal '14 audit, to have them do an audit of the collector, and, or have Terry do it, but then it becomes an issue of, does she have the, the time available to do that on top of everything else?
So this is kinda getting off topic.
Well, not really.
The question at hand right now is, are we going to approve tonight the position? Is regards to, in regards to seeing more resumes, I don't wanna see any more resumes. I, I've already made my mind up.
Well, that's what we had agreed to at the last meeting. And we are an equal opportunity employer, and this is a major department, the Board of Selectment should be involved. And we didn't, you know, we, maybe we could've voted on this tonight, or maybe I still will, I'm not saying that I won't.
Right.
If, if I had received them, so, you know.
Hang on one second, Carol. Andy, what's the, what is the salary going to be?
Uh, I've recommended a 40-hour salaried position at a rate of $29.98 an hour.
Which is...
Substantially less than, than the accountant makes.
Is it a step one?
To step three in, no, grade nine.
I can, I can deal with a step three, and that's a grade nine, which, you know, I disagreed with, but you guys are both to be on it, so.
So...
I would move that we approve Andy Sheehan's hiring request and appoint, do we appoint her, she listed in the, I can't remember.
Uh, we have an opinion that says there's really no distinction between hiring.
So that we hire Kate Stacy as the treasurer collector, effective February 3rd, 2015.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed?
At a grade nine, step three.
Thank you, so moved.
It wouldn't be necessary for her to have a physical or any of that, because she's been our interim.
Correct.
So...
Are you recommending a probationary period?
Uh, I'm not in this case, because she's already in there.
Because she's been here for 14.
All righty, so we are at...
One appointment, 4.3.
Request, review request from Council on Aging to appoint Cheryl Seminow to the Council on Aging Board.
I would move that we appoint Cheryl Seminow to the Council on Aging Board for a term effective January 13th, 2015 to June 30th, 2018.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Mr. Chairman, before we get off, off-subject on it, though, we didn't talk about the audit, and we do need to have one done. I can give you this from DOR, but I know that Beth Anne talked to DOR as well. I thought that our town accountant could just take care of it for us.
Well, she, she can't, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
She can, it just becomes a matter of, of, of workload, whether she...
Does Andy have that?
Whether she has the, the time to do, to do the, the audit, or if you would prefer to have an outside pair of eyes.
So...
I don't have a preference, whatever you prefer, but I know that...
Hang on one second, I just wanted to make a point. On this matter, since I think that this is kind of a policy-type discussion, and I would, I would feel more comfortable discussing it with, with Sue here.
And, and I, I know, I assume, Carolyn, that you're concerned about the timing of this. And what I, what Eric Demas was very clear to me about today, when I talked to him, is that he's done many of these, he's never done them at the transition point. So it's typically at the, the time that they're back in town to do the audit for the year, they go through the books and they, they do the audit. We can, I guess that, that's a policy decision for the board, but...
So I think that's something that we should talk about next Tuesday?
Yeah, I think we gotta talk about it.
Because it's kind of ties into our overall financial discussions. So, um, work session. Could you make a motion?
I'll just, I'll just add it if you want.
Okay. Are we still doing the executive session?
Yeah, that's...
Or are we gonna put that off till Sue's here?
It might be something that the full board wants to...
Yeah, general, I don't, I'm, I'm not comfortable going into executive session.
Yeah, I think it's...
Without, without...
I don't know what it's about themselves.
I don't know what it's about, I don't know what it's about either.
I think it's a worthy discussion for the full board.
Okay, so we're gonna table, second, aye. Uh, 5.1, work session.
So I would move that we approve the bill's payable and payroll warrant.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adjourn at 9:20.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Good night, folks.